Good evening. I would like to call the order, the Clayton Budget and Audit Committee meeting. It is four o'clock PM. Committee member Tillman, are you present?
Present.
And committee member Juan, are you present?
Here.
Here.
Thank you. And the next item on the agenda is public comment on non-agenda items. I do not have any speaker cards, but I don't know if anybody in the audience wishes to speak about something not on this agenda. Seeing none, we will move on to action items. Let me make sure, sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself here. No Zoom participants have their hands raised, so we are good to move on. Our first item on the agenda is an action item. Action item A is consideration of a debt management policy and recommendation to forward to the full city council for adoption. And our interim finance director will be presenting the report.
Great, thank you. I am going to just give you a brief intro and then I will turn it over to Nitesh Sharma, who is our interim finance director. This is an item that Nitesh brought to my attention in terms of a best practice for us to have moving forward. And so he's here to present and share some information on debt in the city and our proposed debt management policy.
Good evening, council members, Vice Mayor Nitesh Sharma, City of Clayton interim finance director. The item before you is the City of Clayton's debt management policy. This is a document, this is a policy that's required by the state of California in compliance with the Senate Bill 1029. And also, as well as the City of Clayton Local Success Agency and the Public Finances, Facilities Financing Authority. A debt management policy is really important for an agency because it really sets forth the criteria of when the, what type of loans should be issued and when that should be considered, either for capital projects or either for funding a new improvement or really looking at refunding debt. But it really provides the framework to government agencies to look at, you know, what are some of the compliance and what are some of the things we look at in order to make sure that the debt is... First of all, when the debt is issued, it really becomes a, the first level of payment that needs to be made. Before anybody gets paid, debt needs to be paid. So we are creating this policy. This is in compliance with, I would say, the Government Finance Officers Association. They put together a best practice. And then this policy that we have put in front of you really addresses some of the, some of the players, what I could, I would say that people that are involved, consultants, for example, the Bond Council, the Disclosure Council, the investors in the city's debt, and then also general public. It's really important to know that, you know, how each of these consultants, what are their roles? And as a finance director, selecting the right consultant to make sure that working on the debt policy, I mean, the debt that is being issued matches with the, with the city's long-term financial projections, but also the city's mission and vision statement. So there's four items that are part of your attachment. First is the resolution. Resolution, it will be as presented to the city council, basically approving the debt management policy. And the debt management policy itself, item number two, very lengthy document that is very comprehensive. And I was not planning to go in detail, but happy to answer any question. The other item that's really important is the 2A, which is the internal loan policy and procedures. This is something that agencies normally don't put in front of their governing board. For us at City of Clayton, it is very important to us to ensure that when we are borrowing from one fund to another fund, there is a policy in place and how are we going to pay interest to that fund? And it happens quite a bit. I would say that a lot of times if there's a sewer fund, water fund, they'll borrow from general fund or vice versa. But really creating the policy that will allow us to borrow, but at the same time making sure the fund is whole and we pay interest, just like we would have paid interest to other, you know, entities. The debt management policy also helps guide a couple of other things. For example, the cash flows, if there is a project that is out there that is an emergency-type project and really we need to do it. And if we need to, if we cannot borrow money, because borrowing money does become very expensive. There's a lot of costs associated with it. So sometimes we, as a government agency, we look at our internal resources and say that can we loan each other for a short period of time some funding? So that should be considered as, on a long-term process and ensure that financially it does not put the city in a bad position. So this policy basically governs all of that. So a couple of other things that I would say that there's a limit and uses of debt and what kind of debt we should issue. For example, if we have a utility fund, then usually the utility funds will be issuing debt backed by rate studies or the revenues that receive from the ratepayers. So it's a, you know, it's a debt that is backed by that. And why it's important, because then future rate studies will be impacted if you issue debt and then it's backed by rate studies. So it's important for that. This city, right now, I will pass on, I have a schedule that I've put together. And then I have one spare one too, if some public wants to see it. But really put together, once you see it, is that the type of debt that we have at the moment and the maturity date, the description, final maturity balance, and then annual interest and principal payments. So we don't have a lot of debt, which is really good. We did issue debt, this is a non-general fund debt. So these are debt that are supported by a special assessment district. For example, we did a Lydia Lane Sewer Assessment District. We did the sewer improvements and those homeowners are paying for that debt because they had the direct benefit of it. We also had a couple of debt issued by the former redevelopment agency. As you know, the redevelopment agency was dissolved in 2014. There were some debt that were issued for, by that, the former redevelopment agency. And it's important to note that the redevelopment agency is paying for the debt. So the general fund is not paying for that. And that debt is getting paid off in '24, '25. So one more year and we're pretty much done with it. So only debt that I see that will go for a little bit longer is the Lydia Lane and Oak Street Sewer Improvement. Those are through '27 and '232. Very small amount. The reason it's been extended for that long period, 30 years and 14 years, because, you know, we don't want to put a lot of burden on the homeowners to pay for higher debt service payments. So we spread it out over time. And, you know, when we issued the debt in 2003, probably the best decision we made because in the next 10 years, that will be all paid for and then the improvements are there. Apart from that, I would say the debt that is being paid off, they are the 1990 debt. We actually did a special tax bonds and then Clayton Financing Authority also did a bond. We just made that debt service payment, it was due on September 2022. So we, those debt actually has come off of our books. So really good. And that was almost, I would say, the total was almost about $800,000 in annual payments that is getting dropped off. It's not a general fund money, so really, but it was a special assessment money, which is going to help those property owners that were paying for that. Debt administration is really important as well as one of the sections in the debt policy. And then the relationship of debt to capital improvement program and budget. Anytime CIPs is usually when debts are issued. But when we are looking at capital improvement budget, we really right-size the debt to ensure that the improvements are paid in a timely manner and then also the debt can be paid in a timely manner. One of the things I did notice, I served at various agencies as finance director, but City of Clayton did not extend the debt for many, many years like many agencies did. You know, for example, it's very common to do 30-year debt and even more than 30-year debt. But I would say even for Clayton, doing the debt only for the years that really is necessary is been something that I see. It's really important because it helps the general fund, but it also helps the stability of the fund as well. Be happy to answer any questions you may have. This policy is very comprehensive and our opportunity is to continue to revise these policies because it needs to be in compliance with the Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board. You know, that is a, basically debt are sold at, the public debt are sold at New York Stock Exchange and it's governed by the Securities and Exchange Commission. So really, and then also California has a body which is called California Debt Investment Advisory Commission. There's a separate government entity that manages all the agency's debt throughout state of California. So we are in compliance with that as well. Be happy to answer any questions you may have or any general comments.
I want to say thank you for creating this for us because I think it's very important for us to have this. But I do have a couple of questions for you. Let me try to switch these two. Okay. On page 23, so it looks like it's maybe page two of three or maybe three of three of the actual policy. I think it says two-way policy on interfund loans, it's a document name. So on page 23, it mentions a budget office. Who is that? It reads, "The budget office will maintain a register of all such loans in any terms, including the date of the loan, et cetera." Is that you all?
Yeah, we'll just have to, we should clean up that language. I didn't catch that in reading it. It would be the finance department.
Okay, great. Good. And then it also references on page 11, let me go there. And I think it was item E. Maybe I'm on the wrong page. Maybe it's 10 of 11. In the objectives, "To ensure that the city's debt is consistent with the city's planning goals and objectives and capital improvement program or budget as applicable." I don't see that listed in here anywhere. Is that going to be an NA? So it's on actually page 10 out of 133. I'm just, I'm looking at the PDF.
Okay.
Page one of your...
Got it.
Policy.
Yes. "To ensure the city's debt is consistent with the city's planning goals and objectives and capital improvement program or budget as applicable." All of the debt that we had issued is, we assume, was consistent at the time it was issued. Anything that we would bring forward at this point would need to be consistent between this policy and how we were proposing the debt for whatever capital projects, et cetera. So we would be bringing forward the CIP on an annual basis or a project. And then we would say, okay, we want to do debt financing for this project. It needs to be consistent with this policy.
And also I'd like to add that a lot of times this, in this section E, it's really that when you issue debt, you're looking at your long-term financial forecast and making sure that if you issue debt for long-term, it is, it fits within your budget and within the resources that you have.
Okay, so if I look at this document as a whole, I would want to see all of those pieces in here. And so I guess my question is, you just said that we would be looking at our long-term forecast, et cetera. So that's not attached to this. And I'm just trying to understand, am I reading this language wrong?
It wouldn't be. So what this is saying is you'll have your annual budget, you'll have your CIP, you'll have your long-term forecast. And anything in those documents that deals with debt financing has to be consistent between the two. But you wouldn't have your budget attached to this as an attachment.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. I didn't want the budget attached to it, but he mentioned the long-term forecast, et cetera, and the goals. And that's where I was confused. Okay, great. I'll stop there.
So I'm assuming that you pulled the language from a sample policy. Is this, did it, was it promulgated by GFOA?
GFOA and California Debt Investment Advisory Commission and also various agencies that have similar like size and scope and what they deliver. So absolutely.
How much, how much, how significant were the changes that you need to make to the document to apply it to our situation?
Significant changes, I would say, but some of the languages are just generic language that needs to be part of the debt management policy. You know, like for example, the team, the professionals, consultants, and who are those? And some of these are basically follows the Government Code Section 8855. So really those taking from there what's required.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I'm mostly interested in whether there are areas that you needed to make changes? Because if the language is just basically taking stock from their guidance, then that is not, you know, that's pretty normal. But if we're modifying it to fit our situation, then I would focus on those areas in which that we're making those changes. So are there any that you'd like to call out where you had to make changes?
It's a couple of things, maybe I would say in the, in the interfund loan, that is something that was directly at this agency and how, you know, the temporary, there is a loan between funds. So we actually had to tailor it in best fits with this, with this agency. For example, the terms of the loan, including interest rates, payment terms. A lot of, a number of agencies, they, when they do interfund loans, they don't even have to follow this thing. They can just do it. As Chief Financial Officer, Finance Director, as Treasurer, I think for us is being proactive and saying that if we're going to borrow money from one fund to another, it's, each one of its, has its own checking account. So we want to make sure that there are terms and conditions and it meets the legal requirement.
So is that a requirement of the legislation?
Not necessarily. The interfund loan is something that you can put it as part of your budget policy. What your policy is, you can, some budgets, agencies give the finance director the ability to move funding from one fund to another and they call it as advances. You know, that's basically advanced means a loan. And, but really for us, it is, you know, what we did is wanted to make sure that if there is a movement of money from one fund to another that is more than a year, usually within a day or two, that's because we are part of a pool cash, so you can borrow and you pay interest on it. But if you're borrowing more than a year, then it follows Section G of the debt policy, which is page 14 of 133 on the, on the, on the whole packet. And really calls out some of these things. And these are some of the things that you don't see in, like, big entities or like, you know, other agencies.
Yeah, and the reason I ask is because I, I don't know how common it is to have the, the protocol over interfund loans as discreetly as it's laid out. I would think that agencies would often, as you say, would move funds or move dollars between funds without the complexity that the policy calls for. So how, when, when would that, if in the normal operation of the city, there needs to be interfund transfer, when would that switch nature from just a regular transfer that gets executed into interfund loan where this policy would kick in?
These two items, interfund transfer is done as part of the budget process. It's basically to pay for the cost that the, if the fund is respective fund uses. For example, if I am finance department and I work on utility funds and I work on general fund, I want to make sure those funds pay for me. So those are done through interfund transfers. Interfund loan is basically, when you, when you have a, when you need to go borrow money and if you have options to borrow either internally or externally, you review those processes. And then if you're going to borrow more than a year, it follows these guidelines whereby these loans are sort of recorded in the books. And then if somebody's reading your financial statements, they can see that this fund on this day made this much loan to this fund and this was, that loan was full. So it's memorialized and then it becomes part of your, your process or your document.
So it's really typically when it would be more than a year and in part because it has a significant, it could have a significant impact on interest allocation or other allocations that are made by fund. And so, you know, I think it's unlikely we would end up with an interfund loan, you know, for the...
I'm trying to think when that would kick in for us.
Well, we don't, we don't have a lot of separated funds that aren't essentially fungible with general funds. So they just, it's all pooled cash. But, and our general fund is relatively healthy in terms of reserves. If it weren't where we have, say, gas tax or other types of more restricted funds, where we would have to have a strict process in place in order to allow for any kind of interfund borrowing. Unlikely to happen in this case because, you know, gas tax or measure J or whatever is considerably smaller than our general fund. Would work if it were in the opposite magnitude. But that would be when you would want to have that well documented and you wouldn't want to just rely on the fact that it was sort of in the background as pooled cash, right? Because all of our cash is sitting in a bank account essentially or several bank accounts.
And I can give you an example of what happens in another city. A storm comes in or a sewer line breaks, sewer main breaks. And sewer fund doesn't have enough money to pay for that sewer main break and you have to fix it right away. So general fund may give that money to sewer fund, but sewer fund cannot pay for that loan because the rates are not covering for that, for the loan payment. So really, you put it on the books and you record it to make sure that people know that sewer fund owes general fund money and then it'll be paying that for that debt service. So a lot of times, you know, you'll do that or there's a gap that in capital projects. You're doing a community center, there's a cost overrun, $2 million and you cannot borrow money from outside. So do you see there's internal funds, is there an opportunity? If you borrow that $2 million, then you memorialize and you pay the same terms and conditions as you would have borrowed from a bank.
I mean, that makes sense. I don't, I think that'd be pretty rare though for us. Because we would, in your example, I think the general fund would just pay it. Or we'd, you know, allocate the funds to wherever and then they would pay it. But I don't think that we would treat it as a loan, per se. I think that's an option that we would have.
Yes, and a lot of times each utility stand alone, it's like its own checking account. So if you, if you transfer money from general fund, let's just say for that, then the entire population is, taxpayers are paying for that. So that's, that's a policy decision on council.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, we have a, we have a more pertinent example, I think, of some of our special revenue funds. And we're going to essentially be in that exact situation. So, you know, that's a choice that we get to make. I don't know if it benefits the district to then incur interest charges and put them further in the hole, but it's an option, I suppose. Okay, cool. Thank you. When we talk about the policy and the compliance with the legislation, it looks like it's primarily designed for new issuances of debt obligations. Can you highlight the parts of the policy that would apply to our current situation right now outside of the issuance of either new debt or interfund loans? Like, because in the, in the staff report, it talks about administration of existing debt. And so I thank you for preparing the schedule. So I'm wondering if, is there anything that is in the policy that deviates from our current practice on the administration of our current debt?
No, at the moment, I mean, you currently are following the debt covenants, which is basically the legal requirements of the debt. And you're, as an agency, Clayton is following the debt covenants. This is basically any new issuances. But also there are, you know, opportunities. For example, if you, you know, having a credit rating done, you know, that's covered in here. So you may, you know, there's any opportunity for new projects or anything else. Those are all governed in here. I mean, those are all part of this policy. So, but at the moment, I would say that, yes, with the debt that we have at the moment, we are in compliance with that. And most of the debt is actually a, what I say, a conduit debt. It's not a general fund debt.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
What is our current credit rating?
I don't think we have, as far as I...
I don't think we've done a credit, we haven't, because we haven't issued debt, particularly not general fund debt in, maybe ever. And so we haven't done a credit rating. We have no reason to go and ask anybody that question so far. And so we have, we don't have an answer to that.
The only reason I was asking is, to Jeff's point, this is, it sounds like generic language that we're using and it's listed in here as one of the criteria. So that's why I was curious.
Yes, and it would be if we were going to issue new debt, particularly if we were going to issue general fund debt, we would absolutely need to, you know, do all of the typical requirements for issuing debt in terms of the, you know, rating and all of the, all of the things it requires. It would take a lot to get to that point in this city. I've done debt issuances in the past and it's a, it's quite a process. Ultimately, this afternoon, what we would like is obviously to answer any other questions that there are, but a, you know, motion second and a vote, which you pretty much cover by doing a motion and a second, but to forward the policy to the council for their, full council for their consideration and adoption.
Should we ask the public if they have any input first?
We should ask that. We should have asked that perhaps before now, but we'll do it now.
Okay, I have one person in the present room that has a question. So if you can go to the microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Great. Thank you. It was a very interesting report here. And I don't have a question, I just want to make a statement here. I have expertise at evaluating credit ratings and I did that for the last eight years of my career. And so I was able to glance at the report, very well-done report. The key thing I want to comment on is, what I was interested in the report is understanding how our investments were being made and that we're making, from what I see there is we're in AAA-rated Treasury agencies. And then when it comes to the CDs, where there's no concentration of credit risk. So, you know, we're around that $250,000 insured deposit. So that's, that's excellent to see from the city. And the last thing that you always look when you're looking at bonds is when you're purchasing a bond is, we're short-term, from what I understand. Under three years generally, or average duration is three years. So again, I wanted to give a thanks to the city for the great work that they're doing. And again, it's, for me, where I've been in the, it's not about getting the return. It's about protecting your principal in these times as I believe that we're going to be going into a higher interest rate environment continually for the next several years. And so it's important to make sure that money is protected. So again, thanks to the city.
I don't have any other speakers. I have one more speaker in the room and then we'll go to our virtual audience. You'll have three minutes to speak.
Hi, I'm Howard Geller, past mayor of Clayton. Been to Clayton residence for a year. And I want to say, as long as I can remember back, we've never borrowed money. We've always had plenty of money in the reserve account. And all the debt that you're looking at now is assessment-driven debt, meaning that it's not our debt. I mean, we've made an improvement and we are charging the people and the people are paying back the debt through taxes or, you know, state-funded things. So we're doing really well in the past.
Any other speakers in the room? Okay. Our next speaker is virtual. Fred, I will promote you to panelist. As I promote you, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Yes, I think the first speaker kind of answered my question. But if, looking at the, the current financial situation of the city, do you know what Moody's or Standard &amp; Poor's would probably give a rating to the City of Clayton?
Fred, did you have any additional comments or anything else you wanted to add?
No, that was it.
Minutes left. Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
That was it.
I would say at the moment, I'm not sure what the credit rating would be because the credit criteria has changed over time. Then, you know, over the last many years since the Great Recession, the way that, you know, Moody's or Standard &amp; Poor's, they look at credit ratings. One of the things that, for example, they look at is also like pension debt or retiree health debt. This was not part of their, their criteria before. But they, they're looking at a number of things like policies, financial policies. And this is one of the policies they also look at. So at the moment... So at the moment, I would not know because those, the way that they do credit review is, it's very comprehensive process. It takes a long time. But I would say just from a finance director perspective, I mean, with our reserves being so healthy, I'm sure that we'll have a pretty good credit rating. Because we don't have any general fund debt at the moment either. Thank you.
And I have no other speakers in Zoom.
The only comment I would make is, as much as I know that you did the work around the inter-fund component, I don't like the inter-fund component. And the only reason I say that, not because it's not well written, I think it is. Because I think that it could give the impression that it would restrict the city in some way. Like if we choose not to, if we choose not to have the policy kick in and treat it like an inter-fund loan, should this occur? Then it could raise the question, oh, why are you not following the policy that says that you want to do this? And so to, to avoid having that be a concern, I would, I would not want a policy that's more restrictive than we would intend that would apply globally. I think in the event that we actually wanted to do the things that are called out in the policy for inter-fund, not having it in the policy doesn't preclude us from doing it. We could still set the terms and do exactly what it says, but we don't have to. And then if we don't, then you don't have the, you don't have the, you know, it doesn't raise the issue of, well, you're not following the policy. So that, that would be my, my only call out on that one. Because I think that there will be, I think that there will be times in the near term where we do make an inter-fund, not even transfer. We're just going to kick money over and we're not going to charge interest. And that will not be, that will not be consistent with the policy for inter-fund. So I see that as a, you know, I don't want to create that inconsistency. So that's why I would raise that.
I know we're supposed to, we're in the comment portion, but just to piggyback off that, I have a question. Is it, is it this body that would determine what the interest rate, what the terms of the loan would be? And at what point is that considered?
Whenever we consider new, new debt or even an inter-fund loan, it's something that the finance director will work with the city manager and look at the, the nature of the project and also look at the type of contribution that's made, that's being made. And at that time, it will be presented to this committee as some options. And one of the options could be that this is a, let's just say if general fund is making the, giving the money. It is, one of the options could be that it's a direct contribution from general fund and doesn't actually create an inter-fund loan. But what I'd say is that having in this policy document as inter-fund loan, just in the event that you decide to do that, it's a good best practice. But council and this committee can also always recommend general fund can contribute to anything.
Yeah, the only, I hear what you're saying, but the reason why I ask that is, I would, I prefer to be more transparent. That way there aren't any issues with where the funds going, right? Because I hear that a lot now in the community with people thinking that funds are already intermingled and, and there's no transparency. So I think having this and the fact that we actually get the final say on whether or not interest would be.
You could always say interest is zero.
Correct, right, but at least gives us that option to do that. And we're being very transparent so that we can say we actually are adhering to what the policy says. It's, it's all documented and we all know what we're doing and on the same page. So I'm going to take the other side of what you said.
Yeah, I mean, I think you'll have the records in the inter-fund, I mean, you'll see the transactions in their, in their fund entries. I mean, that's pretty, I mean, you just create a table and it shows you all the things and it goes to zero. But what's the, like, what's the administrative overhead or the burden when you're trying to set something up? And then the associated tracking and record keeping of that?
For the inter-fund loans?
Yeah, like if we say, hey, make, you know, kick 100,000 from general fund to the streetlight special, special revenue district. If that's it, that's pretty easy. But then we say, hey, make it a, make it a loan, a no interest loan, and then do all the associated tracking. How, what is the, what is the delta in administrative burden there?
Not very much administrative task. And even there's an interest rate involved, then it's usually you'll create a amortization schedule, right? When you present the, the option to create a loan or an inter-fund loan or in the, in the event that is no interest being charged. If the loan has a forgiveness, you'll do that right upfront as a policy setting. You want to make sure that you're in front of this committee and council. So when, when the council votes on it, the policy is set forth and established. And then after that, it's really not much administrative task.
Okay, that seems cool.
So what is the will of the committee?
I would, I, I would like for us to move forward with this as written, to bring it to the full council.
Let's do that.
Is that a motion and a second and some voting?
All right, committee member Tillman?
Is this for a vote? Aye.
Yeah, and committee member Juan?
Aye.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is consideration of the treasurer's quarterly financial reports on the city's investment portfolio for the periods ending March 31st, 2022, June 30th, 2022, and September 30th, 2022. And consideration of a revised investment policy and recommendation to forward to the full city council for adoption. And I will move the item along.
Thank you. This item, you received a very comprehensive title, so you're, that's what's in the item. We are a little bit behind in bringing forward the quarterly investment reports to the committee and to the council. So this catches us up to the current quarter that we have completed, which is good. We still need to review those with the city treasurer. But we wanted to make sure that we at least move those along since the data is available to us. And we, we have been a bit behind on getting those moved forward. So that's one component of what's in the report. And that's just a, a sharing of that information about how our investments have done. The second piece is really revising our existing investment policy that's been in place for quite some time. And sort of modernizing it, giving a lot more specificity, adding a few components. And one significant change is, there was a brief mention in the existing policy of the general fund reserve requirement. But it's, it's, it's a paragraph in the existing policy. And as we've talked for some time, the city really needs a reserve policy that's much more robust than that. One paragraph in the middle of a policy primarily on another topic doesn't really address it. So this investment policy does not address the issue of a general fund reserve. That component just comes out, it is not replicated in the policy. But that's not to say that it's not important to have a reserve or to have a reserve policy, but just that it should exist somewhere else other than buried in an investment policy over time. There are a few other changes in there and I will let Natacha go over those. We apologize that there's, it's not really a traditional red line of an old policy to get to a new policy because it's rearranged. But pretty much, almost everything that was in the existing policy is in the new policy. It's slightly rearranged and there are a few new components in the new policy as well. So with that, I will turn it over to Natacha. And again, at the end, our goal is the same, answer any questions if there are any changes and then request a recommendation to move it forward to the full city council.
Thank you, good evening. So this item before you is to consider the treasurer's report for the quarter ending March 31st, 2022, June 30th, 2022. These two quarters, they basically covers the last fiscal year. This is a compliance item as, so we, you know, we, we need the council to prove this as part of our audit process as well. And then the September 30th, 2022 is the current report that we have. And we're working on the next quarter, which we'll be bringing on in a timely manner. So very comprehensive report. The, this report is basically in the government code section 53643, 646B1. The state of California by itself has the whole section for, for local governments and investments and what are the types of investments that are authorized. So this report is basically taking the, the state of California guidance and then putting, memorializing it in a report. So as a city finance director, one of the important goals that we, when we look at investment is to review the cash flow needs. When we have, as a city, as a reserve fund balances or when we have the, the pooled cash, we have to look at what is the cash outflow and cash inflow on a monthly basis? And what is the amount of money that is not being sort of used as cash flow? And what are the opportunities with those money? Can we invest those money and, and, and get something in return? Interest earnings, which are basically non-rate and fee driven. And those interest earnings in some agencies, they are reinvested back into things like equipment and other things. So really, this is a great opportunity for us as, as, you know, to present to you the, the report. The, the investment type for the city of Clayton is, is pretty solid. I would say very conservative, a number, 67% of the portfolio is in CDs, which is the certificate of deposits which are insured, so there's no risk in there. What you'll see in the report, for example, the, the par value, which is the, the value at, the book value is $9 million, for example, CDs. The market value is 8.5, that's only a paper loss. I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands this. It's only a paper loss if we decide to dump that security and that's when we're going to incur loss. But really, we are not, we are holding our portfolio. And we are also working with UBS, who is the city's investment broker advisor on a, almost on a daily basis. I got a call from him this morning, as a matter of fact, to look at the portfolio and see what's out there and are there any opportunities? But also looking at the securities that we have at the moment and are there any risks with those securities? So far, it hasn't been any, any risk that has been identified. The other portion of the funds are in, in what I call almost 18% in is sort of liquid cash, which is the local agency investment fund, LEAF, this is through state of California. And the other 7% is through the California Asset Management Program, CAMP. And those basically provides us with the, you know, day to day cash flow if needed to be. And now, you know, the funds are in there. The, the funds in US treasury notes and US federal agency, those are pretty liquid as well. About 16% of the portfolio is in there. So as of right now, the current, you know, investment, we have about 12.8 million in market value and 13.5 million in, in, in par value. But really, you know, our opportunity is that, that will, will get all our par value. The investment return yield to maturity was 1.32%, which is pretty good. And we are constantly, as I said, looking at that. We get so many opportunities to invest, but we really have to look at the right, you know, right security by, are those securities backed by, you know, federal government? Or are they have the liquid cash for them to pay for their obligations? So that's sort of, you know, the, the analysis we're, we're doing. So there are seven items in your attachments in there, in your report. But one of the things that I really wanted to focus on is the, the attachment one that shows the, each quarter, how your investments have been, have been performing and what is the market value? And what is the, been the book value of the investments? And, and the reason we, you'll see the cost basis and market value at the same time because really we don't sell those investments. But what's important to note that, for example, July 1, 2021 to December 31st, 2021, our budget for the entire year was $86,000 and we, we earned about $75,000 in first half of the year. So that was basically from the, from the, the interest, from, primarily from the, from the securities that we have with UBS Financial Services. The next quarter, March 31st, 2022, we actually went from $75,000 to, to $128,000. And again, our investment with UBS total about 83%. And then the other, other categories, which is pretty much liquid cash, makes up the other about 17%. And then the June 30th, that's when we.
Wait, can you?
Yes.
Oh, it's off by a.
Yeah. I see what you're saying. Yeah.
And this is page 39.
Yeah, it's all, it's all just off by a.
Yes.
Yeah.
Order of magnitude, that's all.
And this is on page 39, is what you're looking at?
Correct, yeah, on page 39. And then it also changes the percentages to be more in line with what the other three quarters are.
Yeah.
Once that fix, that's fixed, okay.
It seems like the dates at the bottom are kind of whack too.
You mean in the box?
Oh yeah, the 930 instead of 331, 302022.
Yes.
Is that, am I reading that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Correctly or is it supposed to be different, right?
I'll have to say this is something that we put very last minute together.
Okay, that's fine, just want to make sure I'm interpreting it correctly.
Yep. And, yep, so we'll fix that on March and then June, looks like it was, I think, back to okay. And then the dates in June are okay as well too. So, yeah, so the year ended, we were about 35% more than the, the budget that we have for general fund, 131,000. We have, right now, we are doing an audit at the moment. One of the things you'll see as part of your audited financial statements, the, the, we have to put the investments at market value at year end. And usually you'll show a paper loss or they'll, you'll see that's part of the, the audit process. So just something that I believe this committee, this committee should just, you know, put it in the, in the, in the, in, you know, something that you'll see that the difference is. So that number, you know, we're basically reconciling and then every fund takes that, the paper loss. But really, it's just a paper loss and unless we sell the, the investments. For this year, September 30th, 2022, we just started the year and we have about a consistent amount of money that we have in our investment portfolio. And the percentages are very similar on quarter over quarter. And one of the things I will say is that going forward, what we are looking at in, in investments is the, the safety net. Because the, right now, the market is very fragile. And, and we, as a government agency, I, the, the type of investments that we are holding really doesn't, we don't see major changes. But really, just wanted to make sure that we focus on some of those certificate of deposits that are being held by the credit agencies. And we, we follow up with those because at the moment, like I said, the market is just very fragile. And, and, and we don't have some of the investment that, that some other agencies have, like mortgage backed securities back in the, before, in the great recession. There was a big one that agencies took a lot, lot of loss. We basically have very safe investment portfolio. Moving on to the UBS report is very comprehensive, it really has all the.
That percentage is wrong too, it's, should be minus eight, like 82.6%, not 474, by the way.
It was going to be.
I just did that math, so I was like, if I, if I'm doing, if I'm doing the math correctly without a spreadsheet, which is always a challenge. It's, you know, obviously we're, we're a quarter of the way through the year. We're, we're down a little more than you would expect to be relative to.
Is this supposed to represent year to date?
This is through that quarter that how much we received.
Of the total.
Is it quarter to date?
The budget is year to date and the actual is for the first quarter.
Which is year to date as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we should have received 25% of 86-ish, but we received 15,000, which is a little bit less.
And some of the, like I said, some of the interests like LEAF and the other ones are reported on a quarterly basis. So by the time, sometimes posting is, makes a difference too, so.
I, I would say, two comments to that. The date in the gray bar at the bottom is off as well.
Yeah.
But I wouldn't present a year to date budget, but a quarter to date actual, I think that's misleading. I think that's misleading, unless you're very clear on what it is.
We can put a little footnote or put, just put in there.
Because we probably peanut butter the budget, right? We don't do seasonality on the budget for the revenue. So I would just do quarter-to-date budget and do apples to apples because then you'll see, actually, it's easier to see real performance.
So it would be twenty, it would be twenty one five.
Yeah.
And we're at fifteen, so we are down.
Yeah.
But.
Less down.
It's also only a quarter of the way through the year, so.
I think that's a better presentation.
I agree.
Yeah. And we'll change that for all the other ones then, too. All right, so looking at the bond holdings that we basically have each of the reports and we also have the securities and it's actually listed the who's holding, the where did we buy the securities from, for example, you know, which bank or which credit agency. I wasn't going to go through all the details, but really dive into the next section of the, of the report, which is the investment policy.
Before you get there, can I ask some questions on this other section?
Absolutely.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to tie and maybe I shouldn't be doing this, but, okay, you're like, don't try. So this UBS client review, I am trying to understand and tie back what I'm reading as far as our bond overview with the section on your summary report. And I don't, those numbers, none of those numbers on any particular quarter of the investment holding summaries tie out. The only one that does is the accrued interest.
The adjusted cost basis and market value, is that what you're looking at?
Yes.
So March thirty.
What page are you looking at?
Okay, so if I'm looking at page forty three of one thirty three, so the March thirty one, twenty twenty bond summary. And I tie it back to page.
Thirty nine.
Thirty nine. Well, let's use a different one because we already know those numbers are wrong. Let's use June. I'll look at the June thirty, twenty twenty, so page forty and tie that to, it's going to be a lot of pages forward. Hold on, bear with me. Page fifty nine of one thirty three. Nope, I got it down, fifty, sixty of one thirty three. Which is two of sixteen in the June bond summary from UBS.
And. Market value.
Now I have to, I can't keep going back and forth, so I'm going to pull up one on my phone so I can read what I'm trying to show you.
You could use the page number to jump.
I don't want to keep going back and forth. It's easier.
I see what you're saying. So before we spend a lot more energy trying to tie that, let us bring that back when we bring it back, if we could, rather than trying to do this on the fly because I think it's not the best.
It definitely needs to be brought back, but do you understand what I'm saying? Should those numbers all tie out? The ones on the summary should tie to this bond summary that we're getting from UBS?
Because I think what you're saying, for example, is that the nine million in CDs that's on the staff-created summary does not match the eight, seven, five, eight, seven oh two, forty five. And it may be that we just need to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples in those two things and it's not market value versus par, which may be the difference.
Sure.
And so that.
Because what I'm really looking for is what is the backup for the summary that you're asking us to approve to move forward or that even the treasurer is going to sign off on? Where's the backup for that?
This is, but we need to make sure that we're pulling, because this is a new format that we only just started using in the staff-created summary, as I'm calling these front pages. I want to make sure that we're pulling the right numbers that we can tie because, yes, these documents are the backup.
Okay, yes, if we.
To.
Correct.
These documents.
Okay, that would be great. And so if I could see those corrected before I approve anything?
You're not approving anything tonight.
We're going to do it in a couple of weeks?
You're going to do, the council will do it.
Yes.
Yes.
Can we have the corrected ones by then?
No, I'm going to bring the crummy same ones you've just identified for us to the council.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
We're going to correct those. Thank you.
Part of the, just wanted to point out that part of the, when we went back each year for all the way to December and then reconciled to September, UBS actually prepared this for us and they also said that the reports were printed and then, but when they went in the system to do it as back date, things were, yeah, so it's always.
It's always being updated, correct.
Exactly, so that's part of the, part of the challenge. But what we can do is just, like Raina said, we'll just make sure that the summary is tied to that.
Yes, and that was my concern because there's a couple of city of Clayton's and I want to be sure that this was ours, ours. Especially because the return objective doesn't state what's in our IPS. So it has current income and capital appreciation listed, whereas it looks like ours should be preservation of, what do we have? We've got preservation, safety, liquidity and yield, right? So it just, it doesn't jive to me. I just want to be sure these are really our numbers.
Yeah.
And they're investing per our IPS. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. On the investment policy, as our city manager mentioned.
Can I ask you one question before we move on? The, I don't know what page it's on, but there's a, in the staff report, there's a table and it breaks down the percentage between treasuries, CAMP, LEAF and one other, I don't recall, federal bonds. What is the, what was, what's the rationale for this asset allocation? Because it seems like LEAF and CAMP are very similar in liquidity. CAMP is giving us a much, a much higher yield.
That wasn't true a year ago.
Yeah, so it fluctuates.
One of the reasons to have local agencies invest in both LEAF and CAMP is that they tend to flip-flop a little bit, right? So you can kind of move over, move back as you're looking at additional funds that need to be invested. I know we did this with our joint risk pool in their investments. We added CAMP for that very reason is they can sometimes be, they're not usually this far apart, but they can be flip-flopped in terms of who has the most to offer. And so that's why we would have, I will also say, I think that investments is an area where we are, we want to do more to manage them than we have been doing historically. And this is something that I think has come up with the committee before. And while this investment policy that we're going to discuss doesn't necessarily in and of itself handle that, it does set the stage for having a platform to have that discussion about, you know, making more really sort of specific recommendations about investments so that there is a more strategic approach rather than a bit of a laissez-faire approach, which has been, I think, the strategy for a number of years. It's very, very safe and it's very, very low yielding. And that has been, in the absence of having had, I think, sufficient staff time, energy to really focus on, it's like, okay, we know we're meeting the safety requirements of it and we have not done more to make the most of it. I think we ought to, but I think that's an additional conversation that we have not yet been ready to have, if that makes sense.
No, it does. Yeah, I mean, I would, I mean, typically I would ask for like, like an eight to twelve quarter look back, mapping out the yields of the various things so you could see the movement over time. Because I'm going to guess that CAMP and LEAF are probably going to yield over time greater than, you know, some of these other, some of these other avenues that we've chosen, but have a higher asset allocation, but have a lower yield. So I would think even within the confines of our absolute safety rubric, we could probably do something different if you see it. And I don't think we've ever actually seen that over time. So that would be a request at some point. I'm sure we have it.
We do, and I will say that LEAF and CAMP just, just in the last few years just started earning and LEAF at one point was not earning anything. So it was just basically.
At least it wasn't negative.
It was.
A quarter of a percent.
Yes, and the reason was because it was after the Great Recession, you know, a lot of finance directors, they just parked their money over there because that felt like that's the safest place to be because the state of California takes the loss, everybody takes the loss. And so, and now that they have, you know, have really invested, they have been changing their ways that they are investing funds. And so really, as Raina said, the LEAF and CAMP are sort of similar, it's a pool, cash pool, and then the types of investment they choose may vary over time. But when you look at long period, it usually is not that much difference out between each other. And I'll also say that some of the, you know, like the summary report we put together, now we know what you're looking for, so it will also help us in future to see what are some of the things that may be important to this committee and to council. Because, you know, as you go to different agencies, different government agencies, they have different ways that they're looking at. Some just want to look at what is my investment yield and how am I can maximize that? But I, you know, I do appreciate the comments and then the direction because it helps us to make sure that we can be more transparent at the same time, you know, provide you that will meet the needs.
That's good.
Along those same lines, can you tell me what the time period is for that, the summary of a performance by investment type, that same chart? Is it through the end of September? Is it through the end of June? Is it year to date? It mentions a twelve point eight for the market value and I.
Through September, that's the most current. And then we put together this summary sheet for each of the quarters, but which we'll adjust it.
I don't know what that means.
So the table in the, in the staff report is as of September.
Okay.
And we were, basically, September is the one that we are to present it to you. But one of the things we wanted to do is make sure that we go catch up some of the months, the quarters we did, that's when we added the summary sheet. So we actually, this, this was before the summary sheets were added.
Before this, so, so you think, okay, so if that's the case, then your summary table is going to be updated then to reflect what's really in.
Sure.
The UBS reports. Okay, that's what was throwing me off. Thank you, because the numbers don't match.
And now that we know that, we could also put each of the boxes, I mean, each of these tables for each of the quarters in the staff report as well, too. So that way it matches the summary sheet and we probably won't need the summary sheet. You can just put in the staff report itself. On the investment policy, like I said, there was, a lot of stuff is already in the, it was in the previous policy, more of sections of it. But really, we went back and expanded the sections. For example, you look at the general objectives under safety, credit risk and interest rate risk, those sections, we really added more things in there. Liquidity, yield was also in the previous one. In the new one, we just kind of highlighted what are the important things that we want to present and then we want to look for when we are buying investments. The standard of care is basically the section that we beefed up quite a bit in terms of the public trust, ethics and conflicts of interest. And the delegation of authority, we have the interim finance director or finance director and we also have city clerk in there as well. The reason for a small agency like us, we, we just have to have multiple roles that we play. So city clerk gets to play multiple roles as well, too.
Congratulations.
And the reason we didn't put city manager in there because city manager gets to provide that direction and we don't want a city manager to be, you know, have any conflicts with this. So really, it's independent, me coming as a finance director, saying city manager, here's what I want to do and the city manager provides that guidance and the support. Internal controls is also the big one in there, too. And just kind of beefed up a little bit more in there, like what are some of the guidance that we want to make sure, the checks and balances that we have. In this investment types, the previous policy that I looked at was revised a few times, the investment policies, and it matched every time that the business practice was at that time. So when it was revised in twenty seventeen, it matched what the market conditions were in twenty seventeen and what are some of the things that was happening. So for us, the investment types that we have in here, for example, mutual funds, we added in here, pretty safe investments, but we don't have any mutual funds at the moment. But we wanted to make sure that we give ourselves the ability, as is in the state of California government code for local agencies, you know, what are the investments that are authorized? So we put those on there, not necessarily saying we're going to do each one of this, like, you know, medium-term notes or anything, but we just wanted to make sure that we give ourselves that opportunity. Whenever we do a new investment types of our new securities, for example, if you want to do commercial paper, one of the opportunities we have is to come back to the committee and present, these are what we're looking at and these are the options. We just don't necessarily just go and do it. So that's something that we have, you know, that's part of our process is to make sure that we can really look at what's, what's out there. And for a city this size and the, the amount of, I would say, that the investment portfolio, the size that we have and the budget we have, we have to have a little bit on the safe side of the, of the investments that we have to ensure that we, we can, if there is any losses, it's minimal, it's not something that can, you know, financially impact us in, in a negative way. So, but some big agencies, they do a lot of different things. But for us, I just wanted to make sure that we, we provide ourselves with that, the ability to look at some of those securities. Let me see what else we have. Apart from that, this is, again, I just wanted to make sure we capture a lot of the, the, the best practices out there. The investments itself, like the types of investment you choose, there's usually, it's, there's, state of California comes up with guidance, UBS also comes up with, they meet with us and they give us that guidance. And then this policy was reviewed by our investment broker advisor, UBS as well. So they provided comments. We wanted to make sure that, that they are, they can look at this and making sure that we are in compliance. So with that said, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. But really, the policies are more governed towards the investment types and the new investments, mutual funds and a couple of other things, which we don't have at the moment, but we just wanted ourselves that ability to look at those. Do you want to add anything?
I think the, the other piece that, just a couple of other things in terms of the move from the existing investment policy to the new and proposed investment policy. There are a couple of places where we have shifted language from being the treasurer to the finance director, which is more consistent with how we've actually been operating. Not that it can't be changed again, and I think the role of the city treasurer is one that, that should have some additional conversation. But in order to have our policy more match kind of the actual practice that we have, there are a few places you'll see where finance director is listed rather than treasurer. There are, there's additional information added about collateralization just in, in one place and in a couple of other places, just generally a little bit more detail in the new policy rather than what was in the existing policy. The other thing that is not specifically mentioned, however, in the new policy that is in the old policy is allocation of interest. We handle that through our accounting and auditing function, not so much from the investment per se. The investment produces the interest and then we do the interest allocation based on relative shares of the pooled resources that are invested. But it doesn't, that process isn't, isn't reflected in the new policy specifically. It's, like I said, handled on the, kind of the accounting end, but it was explicitly identified in the old policy. So I think those are the areas where there are, other than what Nitesh mentioned, where there are changes between the two versions, so trying to walk between those two versions. Everything else is, is really just a kind of an expansion or a modernization to capture relevant codes, et cetera, so.
And when we'll work on the reserve policy, it needs to be a standalone document itself, just looks at the city as a whole and we'll present that at some point later on. So that's, the reserve should not be part of the investment policy. So that's, the reserve should not be part of the investment policy.
Okay, okay. Um, on delegation of authority again, with the finance director taking sole responsibility. Can you walk me through that again, please?
Yes, uh, I had that session.
Okay.
You're going to lose unfortunately one of your candidates. So if you want to switch.
Sure. I thought that we had established that we were going in until 6:30 and moving those towards the end.
Normally, normally what we do is we have my name in the pass. Have people here heard me do it? It was given the first, will you be, uh, respect their time?
No, we understand. We had, um, a conflict with one of the candidates who could not meet until later. And so it was my understanding that all of you would be being interviewed at the same time, per the agenda. Uh. I see. Understood. Yes. So if you, what is your hard stop? Okay.
I think we should, we, we need to reschedule then.
Yeah, yeah.
That's fine.
Okay.
So what are we rescheduling?
Well, we'll address that as we go, but if you have to go, I understand.
Thank you. Understood.
So. I think the question was delegation of authority?
You had mentioned that the finance director has full, uh, investment authority. And so, uh, can you walk me through that again? I'm reading it and it reads, the city council delegates a finance director, the authority to invest or to reinvest funds or to sell or, or exchange securities. The finance director shall thereafter assume full responsibility for those transactions until the delegation of authority is revoked or expires. And it sounded like that might be a slight change from how it's currently, and I just wanted you to walk me through that again.
Absolutely. Um, yeah. So the old one was, uh, the city treasurer had expressly authorized. But as you know, that on a day-to-day basis, the finance director manages the city's cash flow, manages the, um, uh, the, uh, the, um, the resources there are, um, and then the allocation of resources. And then also the, um, the payments that are made. So really the finance director is the person who, on a day-to-day basis, determines is, are there sufficient funds available to pay for the resources, but are those funds available for investments? So in this delegation of authority, this is pretty consistent with, um, with other, um, agencies as well, where finance director has the ability to reinvest funds and/or to sell and exchange securities. And part of the, um, their, uh, the quarterly report to the council is basically that the decisions made by the finance director in this scenario are presented to the, uh, the committee on a quarterly basis. So you can actually track to see what's happening. But also that what's in, um, the finance, finance director acts as a fiduciary agent. So, and then in this, uh, delegation of authority, even though the finance director has authority, but the finance director works with the city manager in, as, um, as a, um, as a partner to, uh, to, basically before any decisions are made on any securities, they, and making sure that the city manager is on board as well too. Any major changes to the portfolio are usually presented as when we do quarterly reports. We can also, uh, as when I was a finance director in different, in another agency, I still mentioned to the, um, commission saying, next quarter here, there's some of the things we're looking at and here's a work plan and then we'll present it. So, um, here I believe we have a city treasurer that is appointed position. And, uh, and, um, on a day-to-day basis, the city treasurer, as I see, doesn't have, you know, the resources, uh, may not be able to do this job. This job as a managing securities is on a day-to-day basis. Every day you have to be looking at your balances, looking at what's happening. And you may have to sometimes, and in, in my previous role, there are, um, times when I had to sell a security because of the losses, uh, we know, for example, we had corporate note and the corporate, uh, that note that we had was, uh, the corporation was not doing well. So we actually had to sell the corporate note at a loss. But then we bought something at a discount too, to offset that. So on a day-to-day basis, that's what they, uh, this, this does.
I think what I'd like to say, I don't, I didn't see it in the policy, but you know, what you, what I would expect to see is that, you know, in the staff report, it says, you know, these employees, and you named the employees, you know, the, the titles. It says city manager shall oversee the transaction. So what I would expect, I think what you were getting at before is there's a segregation.
Yeah.
Um, but it doesn't indicate that there's like an approval function. Because for internal control, what I would like to see is one person initiates a transaction and another person approve, reviews and approves a transaction almost contemporaneously or timely. It could be like weekly even if you really, for, for demand purposes. But you would want to see something that has the, the two party, the two hands going for it. And so it doesn't say that specifically, but I think that's what you were trying to say. So I, it'd be good if it said it explicitly, um, in that approval function.
We can put it in the internal controls, uh, that, uh, you know, the, uh, finance director will, um, work with the city, city manager.
Not work with.
Uh huh.
You have to be explicit when you say, uh, for control purposes, it can't be like, it, it's got to be explicit. Otherwise it's not a real control.
Sure.
So I, I would be, I would just like, this is what we do. And so that anytime you want to see, oh, you execute transaction number three, let's see the documentation for transaction number three, you say, I executed, uh, you know, this, and then here's the approval. It could be, it doesn't have to be one-to-one, it could be, you know, for ease of administration. It could be like, here's all the things I did this week.
And i- in fact, we do, you know, and this is, this is one of the challenges with turnover. Um, when Catherine was here, you know, w- we get this constant stream from UBS. Do you want to do this? Do you want to do that? Do you want to do this other thing? And eventually, you know, Catherine would send something to me and she'd say, I think we should do this and here's the reason why. And I would say either yay or nay. And she would, there's a form that we filled out that says, you know, I recommended to the city manager that we do this and the city manager said yes, and I signed the form and we have it in our files. It doesn't go anywhere else, it's just for our own internal record keeping, but we do have that system. So if we can describe that more completely, because that is in fact what happens is there's, there's a form.
That's what's happening, but.
There's a form.
To be clear. Yeah. And you don't, you know, so that seems fine. Are, are you good? Are we, are we good? Are we doing questions now or? I, I don't want to, I don't want to.
I think you're doing questions and then we will open it up for public comment question, uh, comments. And then we will do deliberation and action.
All right, let's do it. I don't really have questions. I think I just have comments.
I thought I just did, sorry. On page 96, which is near where we were. And I think this might go back and forth where you said you, you interchange treasurer with finance director, et cetera. Item number six, authorized financial dealers and institutions. Is the treasurer really establishing the selection criteria for pre-approval of financial institutions? And then in the next sentence, the finance director shall maintain that list? Are you both doing that or is it only the finance director?
So the, the treasurer is appointed position.
Yes.
And finance director shall maintain, finance director can recommend treasurer this, um, the selection of financials, traditional of security broker dealers. Uh, but again, with the, with the city manager, but, um, by treasurer, by being appointed treasurer, treasurer has a role in it.
So you want the treasurer to have a role. So they are the ones who are actually going to establish the selection criteria and you will maintain it?
Yes, but it's basically we work together and the finance director recommends, these are the, you know, the ones that we, they meet the criteria and they, you know, they, um, they have the proper securities license and, you know, treasurer is in the appointed position. So it's really working with the treasurer, making sure that the treasurer is aware of those.
Okay. And do we have a current list of that already? Is that already in effect or is this a brand new? Is this something that was not included in it? It's new. Thank you. Great. Um, let me see if I had any other ones. Okay. So in the current, uh, investment policy statement from 2018, um, I don't see where we list what the percentages in, um, CDs that we can hold. But it looks like that's something that was added to this language, which is great. We're establishing limits. It says that no more than 30% in CDs. And so I'm curious, since we're currently at, it looks like 80% based on those other.
67.
67. What, what are we now going to do then to change that?
At the moment, not, uh, because we got to hold those CDs till maturity. And as CDs are held to maturity, as, um, I believe the city manager also said this too, you have to look at the risk factors and you have to look at the other investment types. And are those investment types providing the greater opportunity for investment earnings? At the same time with, um, you know, limited or no risks associated with it. As a government agency, one of the things that when we are, um, when we are purchasing securities are, we actually have to look to make sure that they are backed by, uh, not just a hundred thousand dollars, but more than that, you know, is, is part of the insurance. And so we, we reviewed, uh, the, the percentages, 30% is sort of, um, normal because of the fact that, uh, almost agencies, they rely heavily, if they're general fund, then they may have more money in Leif and Kemp, you know, because of the cash flow purposes. So that usually is higher for us. Leif and Kemp is a smaller percentage, but we put it in CDs. So we are earning is higher. So that's usually what the, uh, the different, um, the portfolio size, uh, represents.
So then when, in the resolution, let me go back to what page is the resolution on. I guess what I'm just trying to make sure is that we won't automatically be out of compliance or that there's somewhere that we state that we will be holding those to maturity so that we will not be, um, we don't have to adhere to that 30% limit or threshold so that we're not out of compliance once that is signed.
One of the things we can do is that I will, I've done this in the other agencies is that in the 30%, we can put 30% or as deemed reasonable by the, uh, by this, by the city, um, finance director and city manager. So that way you give yourself the flexibility.
Yeah, but that's a big, that's a big gap.
There's, there's also a place where it says, if, you know, that something may have been in compliance when we did it and then becomes out of compliance. And I'm trying, I was trying to find that to see.
That's in there somewhere.
It is, I saw it too, but I couldn't remember if it was in this policy or not.
I, I believe it's in this policy.
Okay.
Um, and, and my thought process on that is, is to find that language and to, um, make sure that there's a, um, description of what the path is to get from, okay, we, we thought we were in compliance, now it looks like we're not. What are the strategies to get there? Um, and I cannot immediately find.
It's possible it's in the resolution, maybe?
Hmm, no, I think it's in the policy.
Okay.
It's, uh, section XIIA, it is document page 103.
Yes.
Page 10?
Page 10.
Uh, wait, which one? X?
It's like policy compliance and changes, page 103.
Any deviation from the policy shall be recorded.
Oh, if the city is holding an investment that is subsequently prohibited by a legislative change or in this case, a new policy, the city may hold that investment until the maturity date if it is deemed prudent by the finance director and treasurer. That, that's.
That's the language I saw. I don't know if that's.
I don't see, I, I remember reading it, but I don't see that.
It's, it's the very last words in the policy before the appendix glossary.
I see it now. It goes down to the next delight, next page.
It does.
Okay. Let me read it again. Yeah. It's a small tweak and we don't have to do it during this meeting, but the way that I read what's currently written here is after the fact, not with us actually doing this right now. So it reads, if the city is holding an investment that is subsequently prohibited by legislative change, which is not what we're, well, it is kind of, the city may hold that investment until the maturity date if it is deemed prudent by, by those folks. What, once we, this sounds like after we sign this document, that we're, we, this is our new investment policy statement. We're going to sign it. And it's not, it isn't, it sounds like it's saying something in the future, not looking back in the past from the date that we sign it.
We can add a few words.
Yes. But we don't have to wordsmith it now, unless you want to.
Good.
Yes. Okay, good. Thank you. Um, and let's see, I don't think I had any other questions. I think that was it. You've answered the other ones in your presentation. So thank you.
Shall we open the item to public comment? Um, any members of the public wish to speak on this item? Seeing none. Um, I do have a hand raised in Zoom. Fred, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you will have three minutes to speak.
Yes, um, I, I must have missed it, but I, I, what was the reason for cutting back on the amount of, uh, money held in CDs from, you know, 70 or 80% down to 30%? Um, and then a, a second question is, it looks like the average duration is around 2.35. Is that appropriate? It, should it be shorter than that for a city our size or longer? Or does it really not make that much difference as long as we have adequate funds, uh, maturing, you know, within a year? That's it?
I would like, yes, if you wouldn't mind answering those questions, cause it's.
Sure. Absolutely. Um, so the, the adjustment from, uh, for the CDs at the moment is about 60 some percent to 30%. And, uh, what it, what we allowing ourselves to do is looking at the investment types that are available and, uh, will be able to, uh, earn more in interest earnings and looking at those investment types. For example, if there, there is a opportunity to invest in money market, uh, mutual funds and other, uh, securities, there will be s- uh, same, um, you know, risk-wise, no risk, but at the same time allows us to, um, have a greater return. So this basically allows us to do that. One of the things we talked about is that at the moment that, um, the city has a lot of investments in CDs and will continue to hold it as, as is until maturity. And, uh, I believe your, um, second question was, um, related to, um, the average, um, number of years, uh, CDs. It's important to note that, uh, there are a number of CDs that the city is holding. And then on a quarterly basis, some CDs are maturing and then, and then we're evaluating should, uh, to see if we should pick up other ones. With the current cash flow, uh, that's what we look at is the cash flow needs. And the, the, the current cash flow and the, the reserve balance with, uh, at Clayton, it is adequate for us to have an average of two years because of the fact that, uh, some CDs, if they're a little bit longer, it earns a little bit more than if they're just a year, uh, if we are holding a year or less than a year. Hopefully that, um, answers your question. Thank you.
I do not have any other hands raised on this item, so I will close public comment.
Great. Thank you, Janet. You had some comments, Jeff?
Uh, yes. Hold on, I have. I would just say the, in the one section that you had called out, um, regarding the duties of the treasurer and the, uh, director, I would, I would like that to be a lot more clear on the roles of what is doing what, because it seems like there's overlap or interchangeability. And then if you have that, it could, um, it just doesn't seem that great. Like you, you want people to be very clear on like, this is what I do and when, this is what you do and when. Here's some things we may both be able to do, that's cool, but to the extent that there's like delineation of duties. Because the way you make it sound, not you, you, the, the general you, um, it's almost as if like the roles are interchangeable. Like there is nothing discreet that one does or that the treasurer does that the, that the finance director doesn't also or can't, isn't authorized to do. So that seems weird and superfluous and I don't, I'm not sure if that's the intent. So that, that would be a comment on that part. I'm not sure I'm a big fan of limiting the proportionality of low-risk investments. Typically you would place the limit so that you don't have high concentrations of risk in areas that, or sorry, high concentrations of investments in areas that carry risk. But like, and we don't, like for treasuries, we don't have any limit. But for CDs, we say 30% for some reason. I'm not sure. CDs are, I mean, and then it's, I'm not sure why we would do that. So, and then I think, did we even limit it in camp and, and Leif? I'm not, I don't recall. But the, having the limit on low-risk investments doesn't seem necessary. And it seems, um, uh, it seems like it would constrain us in ways that we may not want to. may not want to. So I would strike those. I like the idea of limiting concentration in greater risk areas, but then I will piggyback off that and say, I don't like the inclusion of greater risk areas at all, like not even close to at all. So I don't think we should be in the business of investing in mutual funds and even commercial paper. I just don't think we should. It's, it's just, it doesn't seem like a good practice, especially we're not a huge city that has a huge portfolio with like an investment manager, like that's just not our thing. So we, you know, we, you can mitigate some of that risk with volume, right? But we don't have that. So, you know, you, you have a bad day and you have a really bad day. And I just think that's, I, I, I would not feel comfortable in that if we start dipping our foot into that space. It just seems overly risky at this time. So I, I would, I would not be in favor of adding those. There's two key sections for authorized investments and they are, I believe, there's like 12 or whatever.
Uh, yeah, it's section eight and then there's A through a lot more.
Yeah, like obviously treasury bonds, treasury notes, treasury bills, those are cool. LEAF and CAM, even the, like number six and seven, CDs and banker stuff. But then when you get into like commercial paper, repurchase agreements, depending on the duration and who is the counterparty could be okay, right? But I don't even know why we would even do that because we don't have the bandwidth nor the expertise to get into these types of more complex arrangements. So I would just not even put it on the table. The immunity bonds, hmm, maybe. Some immunity bonds have gone weird, but they're mostly fine, I think. But then when you get into like mutual funds, money market funds, I, medium term notes, I'm like not, I would not be a fan of. So that's just my, that's not even a question, that's just, in reading, I don't like those.
I didn't have an issue with any of those just because of the restrictions on the quality of what we could invest in. So there's still high investment grade securities, which are very safe, right? So I didn't have an issue with any of those. My, my question was, you, let me go back now, hold on. In regards to the concentration and, and the limits on how, how much we can have in the CDs, I'm used to seeing bans of, of investments, so from zero to 50% in this or up to 100%. I think that's might, that might have been how it was in the, the previous or the current IPS. So a ban would be nice. I'm, I don't know why we would, that's, how come I asked the question on what happens if we're not limited to the 30% in the CDs? Why not say that it can be up to the, to 60% or 70% so that you've got a ban that you can work within? I'd like to see bans on all of these, including LEAF and CAM. And by bans, I mean from zero to whatever max percent the finance director and the treasurer deem prudent. Go ahead.
So they're just banned, sort of, I'm, I'm struggling with that because it's all from zero to something. So really what it is, is what's the upper limit?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
Ban just didn't quite sit.
Or a minimum. It, it could be a minimum because it could be that we're, we're not allowed to have zero in anything. It's got to be 5% minimum.
I personally, the idea of a minimum just strikes me, I mean, you know, you, for example, LEAF and CAM very similar. You could say you, you have to have a minimum in LEAF. Well, except that sometimes you don't want to have anything in LEAF, you might want to have it in CAM. And so for me, a minimum is sort of, it, it, it feels a little clunkier, but certainly, you know, if there's a desire to have an upper limit on any of them, then the committee can, you know, request that we make that change to bring back to the council in the version that comes back to the council. And, you know, it, whether, everything that's listed in here is allowable under government code, right? And so there are already a lot of restrictions in government code as to what we can invest in. So the question is, is there enough of a benefit for the city to, to exclude things from this policy that are allowed by government code or to, you know, identify upper limits on any of them in addition to potentially CDs, et cetera? So, you know, those are things that if the committee has a desire to take that action, then we would want to know what that direction is for the subsequent action.
Yeah, so I, I'm fine with keeping in exactly what Raina just said, that these are allowed by government code and they're safe securities. So, but if you have concern, then I think that we should have.
Oh, I definitely do.
Then we should have, we should have a maximum limit then for the ones that you're concerned with.
I mean.
As opposed to not saying we can't do them at all, should the need arise in the future.
I mean, if we go back in time, well, actually our, the status quo is that we can't do them. They're not included, right? So it's, that is the status quo right now.
Oh, the, the current IPS has mortgage backed securities, it's got all kinds of stuff in there.
There's no mutual, oh, okay, yes, you're, it, it has some of that.
Yeah.
But there's like, the idea of mutual funds and these other like commercial papers not included within the scope of the, of the current policy. So that's an addition, right? So I would say the, the onus would be, why do we want to make the change? And I think it's to, it's worth chasing yield, right? But the, the risk to me, I just don't, I'm not, I wouldn't be comfortable with the risk. You know, as your example, well, one day you had to be, it's a daily thing, you have to monitor it, you have to, there's something happens, you know, Enron goes bust, which would have met all the criteria that we have here. It was rated by the things and if, and our paper could have been there, it was big enough, it would have satisfied these requirements on one day and the next day it wouldn't. If you're not there making the sale, you're in trouble. And that's not like something that I want the city to be in the business of. So that's, that's, that's like the specific.
No, that, that's a good question and it actually opens up, I know this is comment, but I'm going to ask another question. What is UBS's role? If, if it's not a managed account, and I think I read in here that it's passive, but Natish is talking to them on a daily basis, which to me sounds like it's a managed account by UBS, not, not active management, but a managed account. Those are two different things.
It, it's, they typically throw up options to us and answer questions, but they don't say, I mean, they sometimes, like I've asked James, the guy who normally emails us, it's like, you know, if we have this much available, is this a good fit for our portfolio? And he'll say yes or no, but it's that level of passive. Like there's no, he's not sitting there saying, I think you should do X.
Okay.
Not doing that. But we're also not paying for him to do that.
What are we paying them?
Custodial fees.
Yeah, we're, we are barely paying anything, which is great because we're getting very little for what we're paying. So, I mean, we're getting what we pay for, which is to say, we do not have, we do not have an actual, you know, what I would call like a true financial advisor. Like if I think of my own situation, like I have a financial advisor, right? And you pay them some small percentage.
Yeah, okay.
They watch stuff for you and make decisions consistent with your direction. We do not have that. That is not what we have. We have Natash or whoever sitting in the finance director and we have UBS just sending out to all of their clients, this barrage of CDs that are.
So you're sick one day or otherwise on vacation.
Influenza A.
You're on vacation on, on a tropical island, like with no connectivity and something happens where it would be prudent to make, to execute a move, but you're not able to. That, that to me is, that's the risk.
That's risky, sure.
Yeah. So, you know, maybe Janet will, will come in and.
And one of, one of the things I will say is serving in multiple agencies, there's a lot of mitigating factors involved when you're investing funds and like especially with government agencies, especially with state of California has very strict investment guidelines and not like CalPERS or anybody who can invest in real estate and other things. So.
That's how they get that 7% discount rate.
Yeah, so, but I will say that, for example, in one of the cities I was at, they, the city actually could buy derivatives. And that was something that was very complex to manage. And when I took over, that's one of the things that I said, I don't want to ma- manage derivatives because it's just changes on a daily basis, the price fluctuates and then it's a huge loss that can sustain. But the investments that we have listed here on, on, you know, one through 12, and most of these, even if you look at the, the criteria, it has to be very, you know, highest ranking, highest letter and, and also under, you know, like for example, money market mutual fund, you know, funds have to be in excess of $500 million, for example, and no more than 10% or 5% be invested in there. So, I mean, that's, and then a number of these are like mutual funds with the, with the Securities Exchange Commission, but as you could see that even under that, California government code has restrictions on which type of mutual funds you can even purchase. So, and that's, again, it's, it's a policy direction from this committee, if that's something that, I mean, we're happy to do whatever best fits.
Yeah, and I know the state has their own guidelines, so that's great. I mean, it provides a, a consistent benchmark for everyone, but it doesn't mean that we can't be more conservative. So I, I just, like to me, I would, that's where I would go. I just, yeah, so, I, I mean, you know.
It's limited. I mean, and it may be, I don't want to restrict us from being able to, to have more flexibility on the types of instruments that we, safe instruments we can invest in, because that's been a pet peeve of mine since I know that there was a crash in 08 and things have happened in the market and right now it really sucks. But I do think that that could have helped us in the long run, even to build up a little bit more to be coming in each year. It's been a pet peeve of mine that we haven't been nimble enough to be able to do that. And I, I get that that's not what he's in the chair to do on a daily basis, but it could have helped along, in the last 10 years. And so I have a big problem with us limiting ourselves too much, but still staying, staying safe. But I'd be fine if you want to, you know, put a maximum on, it says no more than 10% of the total portfolio may be invested in mutual funds. Maybe we, we make it less than that. But I'm, I would also like to hear what the other council members think or even other, more public. I mean, we had one person in the, in public comment. There might be others who are financially savvy who have thoughts on this as well. But I don't want to be too restrictive, but I do like where we're going with this because reading what we had before, I'm glad that we're making some of these changes.
Yeah, I, I like, I mean, the document itself, I think is great. I, with the clarifying things that we had talked about already.
Yeah.
Except those two items.
I understand.
So i- if I'm understanding, there is some hesitance on your part, Councilmember Juan, regarding item nine, which is commercial paper, and item 12, that is mutual funds and money market mutual funds, and that perhaps your preference, if I'm reading it correctly, would be to take those sections out and eliminate them. And Vice Mayor Tillman's perspective might be leave them in, but maybe restrict them more from a percentage standpoint to allow that flexibility. And so I just think to try to move us through this process to get some guidance.
And I would, I'd probably strike 13 too.
Yeah, I was going to ask about 13. So, you know, I, I guess it would be helpful for us to just get as part of whatever motion there might be to move forward, get specific direction on nine, 12, and 13.
What additional, you mean as far as percentage?
Like in, out percentage limit.
He wants it out, I want it in, and I'm fine with putting limits on them if we need to.
So I would say for the, in the interest of advancing, that we, I would recommend that we advance to the full council, the policy as written with indication that there's alternatives to strike, whatever.
Got it.
That way you would present, like it would, it was, you know, the.
Yes.
I'm trying to think of how to say this.
Yes, I, I know completely how to say it because we did it before with some other thing that came out of this committee and it was, it's been, you know, here's what we presented to the committee, these concerns were raised or this issue was raised and, and it was, we handled it very much the same way. So we can certainly do that in the staff report.
Yes.
For the item, which was to identify, oh, I know what it was. It was budgetary reductions for CalCities and those things and the council compensation, et cetera. And we handled that in the budget process that way. So we can handle that very much the same way in terms of reflecting forward what the committee has, the, the good dialogue that the committee has had. And we will make the corrections in the tables to just, to confirm, we will make corrections in the tables to make sure that the numbers tie and that the dates are correct so that we're consistent from start to finish. I will say this may not come back on December 20th if we don't get that all tidied up in time, but just, just so you know, it will come back to the council. So is that like a motion and a second and some approval?
He made the motion, I'll second.
And we'll bring him back like that.
Yes. Aye.
Aye.
All right, I got it. I do want to acknowledge that we do have a hand that went back up on Zoom, this person had already spoken, so public comment was already closed on item 3B. So we're going to move on to item 3C.
Wait, you still had one thing.
I would just add, like, one thing that we didn't talk about was the fee structure of the associated things and like if there are differences, so you may want to add commentary around that. Like if there are, like these moves, these intraday or interperiod moves that we're talking about, if there are associated fees, that's, that could be a portion, so.
We are going to take a momentary recess and we will come back, we will start off with item 3D and then move on to item 3C.
Wait, didn't we already do the? Hey, how are you?
All right, thank you. We are going to re-adjourn our meeting. It is 5:51 PM. We're going to move. Recoveen, I don't, sorry. This is not usually my role, so I'm sorry, everybody. So we're going to jump to item 3D, which is conduct interviews and recommend appointments to the Community Financial Sustainability Committee to be acted on by full city council. And I will move that on to the committee.
Great, well, thank you both for joining and for applying for our Community Financial Sustainability Committee. I know that you guys read what this is about when you read the application. Councilmember Juan both read, oops, is that me crackling? Councilmember Juan and I have both read both of your applications. And if you don't mind, we'll ask you a few questions. Is that okay? Are we going to be formal and make them leave the room, et cetera? How do you? Yes, I, yes, I would like, I don't know how. Yes, you'll approach the microphone and speak. And we don't have prepared questions, but we could pepper you those with those if you'd like. But I would like, if you don't mind, for each of you to come up and tell us both why you'd like to be on the on the committee. And we'll start with Mr. Killerman, since you've been here for almost two hours. Thank you for your patience.
Good evening. The reason why I want to be here on this Financial Sustainability Committee is that I've done this for the past decade for the Chevron Federal Credit Union. I'm a volunteer there, and it's basically a financial oversight committee. Our chief number one goal is safeguard our assets, to maintain an adequate system of internal controls, and also to make sure we do adequate financial reporting. And so we hire the external auditor for our credit union, which is one of the largest in the country. So it's in the top 1% of asset size. So I have a lot to give to the city. I've been a resident of the city for 25 years. Only recently have I been become engaged in city politics. I try to stay in the center. I call it as-is. But I do have an extensive experience, background in finance, accounting, auditing, compliance, and corporate governance. So working for the Board of Directors of Chevron. So I've worked on major projects. So I believe as you're kicking this off as something new for the city, I'll be able to give guidance to my fellow members and to engage them and to make sure we bring it back to the council. That's the key thing, bringing it back to the council, say, here's where we think we should go to. What are your feelings on this? Because I think right now, we're just at the beginning stage. But we need to frame it much more and to make sure we're aligned with what the council wants. So I'll keep it short.
Thank you. Well, I was going to have them both do it. And you want to have them both do it and then we can ask questions? Okay.
So it's on. So I'm Hank Stratford. You asked what, just why we're interested in it. I served on the council, served on the budget subcommittee, and just realized the challenges that the city has. It's a, you know, wonderful city, but with limited resources and the budget and the finances always seem like it's a kind of a critical area that's that's tough. It's a challenge. There's not a lot of opportunity to to increase the revenue. It tends to go up some each year, but expenses also go up, and it's hard to sometimes to get that right balance. And I thought that when, I believe it was the mayor had sent me an email asking if I was interested. I thought it gave me an opportunity to to stay involved and to give some input into this kind of critical process. So I've been any, well, I guess you'll do questions.
Well, you're there, so we'll start with you with questions. Let me find your resume, give me one second. You can hop in if you.
So, given what you know, how would you approach your first six months or so? Like, what level of involvement would you seek? And, you know, how would you apply your skills? And, you know, like, what does that look like?
I'm not sure what it looks like. I'm not, I'm not sure if the committee knows what it's going to look like either, from what I can tell. Yeah, I imagine we would, we would be involved. We would see, I guess, what the projections are, what's coming in, what we're looking at, and if we if we're going to have enough to meet our our expenses. And if not, then then what do we do? And it seems like the committee is being asked to just, is to be another set of eyes to give some suggestions, especially because sometimes it's it's tough to not give the raises or to make cuts when you have to. I remember when I was on the council, we had furloughs. We did furlough days for a period, like January here? Before you. And and so we, and we did that, and it was, we didn't like doing it, but it was something we had to do to make sure that we we kept the budget straight. So I imagine that's probably is seeing, I guess, what the numbers are coming in and looking at what are some areas that, you know, either additional revenue sources or areas that could be adjusted expense-wise. And in turn, how often that is, I don't know. I mean, it's probably not, it's critical around the budget time and the preparations, but not probably not all year long.
What is wrong with my microphone? It stated the minimum, minimum of four meetings a year is how I read it.
Yeah, but I think, you know, that depending on the proclivities of the council, or sorry, of the committee, it it could be, you know, it could be a lot more involved. I mean, it depends on, that's why I asked, like, what you're, what you would envision it to be. Because, you know, it could be, as as stated, it could say, hey, I'm really interested in this, so I want to spend time on this. But like you said, there is, it's new. So you kind of get to make your own way. So that's why I'm interested in what your, how, in what way you would make it. That's the, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, and I guess I'm not quite sure how I would make it other than, I guess, seeing what the needs are as they come in and what would help the council and the subcommittee and the finance director and those, and the city manager, all the people that are involved in that process.
Okay, thanks, that's great.
Sure, yeah, that that makes sense, yes. This is the strangest interview, but we're going to roll with it.
That's it, yeah, it's, I won't be able to keep my train of thought. So following what Hank was saying, you know, what I do see is we have very, four very diverse candidates with very good input on where we think we possibly would go with this committee. And so I think, you know, the first thing that I would do here in the initial first quarter, and it may not take this one meeting, it may take several meetings. But what I've done in large projects I have led at Chevron is the first thing is to make sure we're all aligned with the mission. So we're looking at a charter here. And we have a mission that the city council has provided to us. But I think the first thing I always look at is let's further define what that opportunities are. And so I want to reach, this is a team building exercise, to build that team, that committee. So what I want to do is get a layout of all the opportunities that are going, that we think that would help the city within the confines of our parameters or the scope of our, what this Financial Sustainability Committee is. From there, what we would typically do is then we would start saying, for a committee, is saying what's in scope, what's out of scope? Because we have limited time, we have limited resources, so we need to do that. The next thing is we want to look at is deadlines. What are the deadlines and also what are the deliverables? That will come from what's in scope, what's out of scope. And then we want to look at, again, resources and on budget, because I think there may be some budgetary needs, and I think we're going to need a lot of input from city resources and maybe outside the city resources, for example, CalPERS. So when you get into the details there, I think there's a lot of things that we need to do. For example, I'll give you a couple of things that I see cherry picking from the tree is that one thing, what I see at large companies, and also I've seen it with some cities. When I was involved on the Concord Monument City Task Force, we worked with one of the best city managers in Contra Costa County and maybe the state of California, and his name was Ed James. And he brought in the concept of metrics. He wanted people to perform. And so basically, it was not just people, it was also how we spend our money. And so he brought in performance metrics, which was unheard of. So he wanted to make sure we're just not spending money on labor, but we were also spending money on capital. So when you look at Concord right now, the great things they've done there with their streets, medians, beautification, cleaning up crime, that was all based upon Ed James's vision, especially for cleaning up the Monument Quarter, which I was on that task force. So again, when I look at this here, is I think we got some very good people. There's other people we can reach out to the community for. But again, it's taking all these ideas. Last thing I want to say, engagement. We have to have engagement with the public. Engagement is extremely important. City of Concord, for example, when you look at this Financial Sustainability Committee, it's about basically engaging the public and also sharing information, framing our budget into maybe two to four pages, so people knows what's happening, and doing some deep dives on some issues. So what I want to say there is when we do that engagement, the City of Concord, what they've done for many years is they engage the public. They have workshops. So that could be something we do as a committee, is we could lead a workshop with the public to get that information out, but also to get the input. So I don't see this committee as making budget decisions. If you're asking me specifically, what I do see is engage in the public, say, okay, you have choices of how you want to spend your money, but we have limited funds. So if you had to choose between A and B, what do you choose? So those are the type of things that the City of Concord has done. It's really an educational session, but they get input. And then that input, again, comes back to the council. My belief is, I spoke with several council members, we should not be circumventing the city council. That's the concern that I have with this committee, is we should not be, sorry, we should not be advocating for revenue increases or decreases to expenditures, again, increase or decrease of the expenditures or for tax increases or tax cuts. What we should be doing is make sure the public is educated and that they're aware. We do not want to get into the political arena because then once we get into the political arena, we lose trust. So again, these are the things, you want some ideas? I'm giving you the ideas, what we're trying to do here. Again, we're not publicly elected officials. I am a little concerned. We do have two former council members, and so there could be some group think to go back to the old habits. But also, they bring a lot of knowledge about what, how a budget works, how city functions. But we are not elected officials. And what I do get concerned is if somebody decides to grandstand. That's a real concern there. Somebody says, I believe we should be doing X, especially, for example, should we be commenting on people? Because a lot of our activities are dedicated around people. Is that something appropriate, our committee? So I would say that's out of scope. Should we be commenting anything on police? I believe that's out of scope because these are political actions. And to me, they they would have, they could do damage to the trust that we're trying to build with the public. So I'm going to leave it there. I could go on for a half hour, but hopefully you get a little thought there.
I had it on and then I turned it off again. Sorry about that. Hearing what you just heard from Mr. Killerman, how would you find yourself collaborating with, well, maybe ask it a different way? In your past, when you had to work with other personalities or other people from differing opinions, can you give me an example of when you had to come to consensus? And how that works or not?
I can go back to, I guess, the city council experiences, coming to consensus. The budget challenges were always, were there, trying to come up with. The employee's compensation was probably one that was the most challenging because we had employees that that we loved and they did a great job. We wanted to reward them. But at the same time, we didn't have, you know, we had a limited amount that we could give to them. And so we'd have some people on the council that wanted to give them nothing. We had some that wanted to give them more than we had, and it was trying to come to a, an agreement of what what worked. And and we did it by just having open discussion and talking about it and looking at, you know, what, you know, trying to, trying to convince those that wanted to give them nothing, that they deserve something, and also trying to to bring down those that wanted to give them more than we had, just to recognize that we needed to stay within the budget. So that was one example that we would wrestle with and eventually came to a point where we felt comfortably, I felt comfortable with what we came up with. But, yeah, there are challenges. I I like the the suggestion of getting, I'm not sure how you go about doing it, but getting that public's input, does you, if if you get to the point where cuts have to be made, and would they rather have this cut or that cut? You know, those are always tough decisions, too. And I remember as a council, it was hard sometimes to know what would the public want, and what would be best for the public.
Keep my hands back here, so I stop touching it. You can both stand there if you want to. Because it really, it really goes back to what what Mr. Stratford was was saying is, my concern is that, yes, we want to have community input and seeing what the parameters are of what this committee is supposed to be tasked with doing. We definitely have the mission. You guys would incorporate that how you would see fit. But given everybody's background on where they are and what we've specified in here, I I'm struggling a little bit just to make sure that there is some, there isn't group think.
That's right.
Yeah, because I think that's important to continue to maintain the the community's trust.
So I think going to you right there and leading to the question that's out there on group think. I've served on major, very large projects at Chevron that take several years to to basically come to to an end. And and I've also been on a school board. And and nothing is more confrontational than a school board. And I did only serve a limited amount of time on that. But one of the fifth key things, whether it's I'm on a school board or when I was working on Chevron major projects, is one of my tasks where I was leading, I was leading these projects, was always to seek out the minority opinion. And so I always, always looked out in the room, and I always looked for a contrary view. And sometimes that involves prep work before the meeting. Now, of course, you can't do some of that prep work when you're dealing with, you know, with public meetings. But the bottom line is you always seek out a different opinion. And then you flush it out to say, why do you believe that way? Without being judgmental. And what I can say to you is when I've done that, I've, it's changed my mind on issues. And and then all of a sudden, that's good. We have to consider that and add that on as as a key deliverable. And so that's one of the things you need to do, is you need to flush it out and say, does somebody, for example, it's as simple as this, does somebody have a different opinion or something that they think would add value? So you have to be able to cue people. And people have different ways of, you know, some people are quiet, so you have to draw it out. Some people are going to be like me, they're going to say it as is. So you have to be able to read the room with your fellow committee members and be respectful and not be judgmental to what they respond to.
Thanks. It is strange.
You know, I just, I think the thing that I I always think about, not always, because it hasn't been that long, but that I'm continually thinking about here is that how we operationalize this committee? Because we have a limited staff, you know, we don't have, it's not a large organization where you're going to have, you know, be able to pull resources. where you're going to have, you know, be able to pull resources in. You know, so it really is, you know, the way I see it is, it's going to require someone to get, roll up their sleeves and really, you know, spend time doing things in the nuts and bolts. Like, how do you, you know, when we're as a council, I don't, we don't do that very, we rely on staff, staff provides a lot of information, they're taxed, you know, already with their time. You know, when you're at work, you manage people, and you tell them, I want to see this, and you see it, right? But here, in this role, I don't think it's like that as much. How do you, do you feel, how do you see that happening, the shift from someone who is in a leadership role and able to request and receive information, in transitioning from that into the role where, you know, you are the one that is having to do the analysis, or, you know, maybe, maybe you're doing this, I don't know, maybe that's not your thing, but more of a hands-on role.
Yeah. So I guess, I guess I'm not sure exactly what the, and again, maybe the committee doesn't know either, but I don't know if this subcommittee is, like, does this, would this, not subcommittee, but this advisory committee, take the initiative in terms of planning out, you know, what its roles are, or what steps it takes, or what it does? Or would it be acting under the direction from the council?
You're on your own, the five of you, with some guidelines, so.
I think that you will have a significant amount of latitude in how you carve out the role of the committee. And you may say, I think it should be A, B, and C, and then you say this, and then you create, and we say, no. And that could be, or we could say, that is awesome. But really, you have latitude in really setting that direction. And then, you know, and I think we collaborate, say, yes, I agree, like, we didn't set out a detailed charter, so I would expect you to do that, but.
You would expect the advisory committee to.
And then we would talk about it and say, I agree with that, that's great, or I think you've missed the mark a little bit, so let's, you know, regroup, but that's you.
Okay. But there are, there are, so there is a mission statement.
It is in the document.
There are duties of the committee, and they're broken down into, looks like seven, six areas, seven areas, six areas, maybe eight, because there's some sub bullets. So it does specify, I'm going to say that in quotes, what the duties of the committee are. And to, go ahead, were you going to say something?
I guess I would like to offer up, too, that, you know, I think it's important, and it's incumbent on the city manager, to create a bit of a work plan to start the committee. So we really won't just completely toss you into the deep end by yourselves, you'll have a little company. And, you know, so the, I would say that the first piece of it is, is a bit of a work plan for staff, largely myself, to, you know, make sure that you have the relevant information, that you understand what's in the, you know, the resolution that was adopted, that, you know, we get you started in the right place. And then there are some specific milestones, whether it's mid-year, or the budget prep, or, you know, budget hearing. But between, you know, starting the group off and making sure that you understand what the touchpoints are, that's where I think you have quite a bit of latitude as a committee to then sort of maneuver like, yeah, this is a place where we think we should do this kind of activity or analysis, or this is, you know, this other thing should happen. So I do, you know, I think there's some framing on the front end that, that we would do and set those points, but then I think the rest of it, in terms of sort of prioritization, et cetera, is going to be what you're hearing from the committee, which is, okay, given, you know, this structure, where's the biggest bang for the buck from the committee's perspective in terms of activities and outcomes? So I mean, I hope that helps, because that's sort of how I see framing it upfront, to try and set the committee up to be successful in, you know, meeting some of the goals that are identified or were identified by the council in the adopting resolution.
I concur. So the overall, I mean, the objective of the advisory committee would be, I mean, it's got to be to help the council do your job, right? And so, but you want us then to come up with, I guess, with the city manager of what, how we can best help you?
Sure. So right now, there's distrust within the community from the current council, that seems to be something that came out of a survey that was done, and so.
Distrust of what?
It didn't really specify, it just said, do you trust the current council? And yes or no, in the percentage of, I think it was, do you trust the current council? And the noes were very high.
Okay.
But it didn't say, it could have been.
It didn't say if it was on like, when it comes to finances, or when it comes to.
Babysitting.
It didn't specify.
Okay. So just the overall, general distrust.
Correct. So, given that we have critical issues with the budget, and our expenses are definitely exceeding our revenues that are coming in, and there was, along in that same survey, there was the, whether or not to have a tax on, a bond measure on this current November 8th election ballot? I couldn't speak, my goodness, I couldn't spit that out. And so that was, it was along the same lines of that same conversation. And so there were a lot of community members that were very upset about that, because they didn't understand why that was. And so this body, your body, would be tasked with being the public-facing individuals in town that community members would trust more, perhaps, than they trust us, letting them see, we all looked at the budget, given what we've all, five of us, or four of us, or however many of you guys are sitting on there, see, these are the areas where we think the council could look at cuts or not. It's just a different voice to hear from the five of us sitting up here. And it, you might find something different than what the five of us, or even the two of us sitting here on this Budget Audit Committee seat, that we take back to the full council. It's possible that with fresh eyes, you guys might have a different idea of ways that we can go. It's just, again, giving us ideas, but we have the final say on what happens, the whole council does. Yeah.
Got you.
Yeah. I don't know that we have more questions, unless you do.
Yeah, it was mostly that, like, I, so I want, now that we clarified, I wanted to give you a chance to actually answer, like, because this is a, how do you see yourself, like, transitioning into that roll-up-your-sleeves-type role, where you're, you know, you have that latitude, and it's you and the rest of the committee?
I think, I think the initial part would be meeting with the city manager as the committee was formed, and identifying, I guess, specifically, how we could best help the council. And I know that, I'd hate for us to, like, spin our wheels doing other things that might be interesting, but when it comes down to making decisions, you know, of budget decisions, finance decisions, they're not going to be useful. But until we'd have that meeting, until we sat together and tried to identify really how we could best serve you, I'm not sure, I mean, other than, I think, that would be the initial meeting, right, would be to come up with how we could best serve the council, how would that committee, what the advisory committee does that would serve the council. And hopefully, there would be that direction and input, and then, you want to make sure it's meaningful. I know when I was on the council, we'd have studies done or things done, and they were great, and then they'd sit on the shelf, and we would never would touch it again. And so I would hate to serve on a committee, or spend my time doing something that's not beneficial to the city, to the council. And so I guess it'd be coming up with, I guess, what we thought would be the most helpful, and then get your input on whether you think that would be helpful, and going from there. Then answer the question. Anything else for me?
No.
No. Thanks for your service. I know it's not always, it's sometimes thankless, but I do appreciate you guys taking the time to serve and all that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
To answer your question, Jeff, it's a great question, and something that doesn't easily come about. And so when I was at Chevron, I had to take a project management class, and it was the most god-awful thing that you ever done in your life, because it was designed for engineers. But it basically, it took about 160 hours of work to complete, and so I'm used to this type of work that it takes to initiate and kick off a project, to frame it, to develop the opportunity statement. The key thing, what I'll be doing is, for example, if I'm on this committee, is going back to that mission statement, and the six, seven, you know, items that are on there, and asking the fellow committee members to say, bring five opportunities that the city should be looking at from this committee's viewpoint. And again, this five opportunities, that would be helpful from what you think this role should be. That would help it. What I see the city staff doing is framing, giving us the budget, here's the budget. By the way, you're subject to the Brown Act, which is very important, so we can't be colluding outside those meetings. I'm correct, right? We're subject, right? So that's a very key, important issue, is that some people on this committee may not have served a government role before, and they need to understand, you can't be calling up your fellow members behind the scenes. So again, we want to list out those opportunities, and then as you develop these alternatives, you start talking about, is this something that adds value? How much time is that going to commit? How much resource can we really look at the city? Because there, we're very thin-staffed, as it is, and so one thing I'm always mindful is, when you use city resources, it's taking them away from other work, and there's an opportunity cost to that. So these are things that you need to do, and those are in that initial sessions, I think it may take several sessions to really help form this committee. And once we do that, it will help frame the issue, because you will have to force rank what your opportunities are, and where you want to spend your time. That again, gets into the in-scope, out-of-scope, and then you need to come back and present that to the council and get their input, and then probably recycle again, say, here's what the input is, we don't want you to go in that direction, or here's where we want you to focus, it's not on your opportunity list. So that's the key thing, and asking your neighbors. So it should just not be the committee members, you have neighbors, and you can engage your neighbors in this process. Hey, I'm going to be on this thing, what do you think we should be looking, what do you need? Going in the last thing about trust. Trust is a very important thing, and there's a lot of scientific research that has been done on trust. I just read a book called Extraterrestrial, it's a great book by Avi Loeb, who's one of our great scientists in the U.S. And he wrote a page on trust, and about how scientists sometimes forget that the most important thing, especially with public tax dollars, is to make sure the public is informed and that they're engaged, and to stay away from politics, stick to the facts. And as you stick to the facts, and you have those engagements, and you provide that information to the public, you'll eventually get to the right answer. And I think this committee will get the right answer, because we have a council that will guide us, we have people from the community who'll give us good input. So if we try getting political, or do, we'll see that at the meetings, right? They'll tell us, the city is good for telling you what you should not be doing, and also paying them back occasionally when you're doing something right. So again, I think we have the right, just looking at the four candidates here, I think we have a very good, diverse crew here, we need another individual, maybe another two individuals, that, you know, as you do these discussions, maybe you see, we need something else in this committee, so. But I do think it adds value, and I think it's about time, and again, I think the key thing is, from my perspective, is not making budgetary decisions, it's really getting the information, parsing out to the public on what the city is doing. And I also believe metricing is important, but the question is if you have the ability to metric your, you know, key tasks that are out there. I'll give you one thing, for example.
Actually, I'm going to stop.
I'll let you go, I can talk for hours, so thank you.
No, thank you so much. Can you turn off that microphone, though? Okay. Oh, was that what was wrong with it?
Is it plugged in? Is it turned on? This is the IT support.
Turn it off and on, okay. I was going to say, that was the strangest interview process I've ever had to do, but it was, I thought, it was worthwhile, though. To me, it was. I do wish that we would have been able to do all of them at the same time, but I understand that there were time constraints, and I get it. And again, thank you for your patience for staying. I do like that there are different points of view, and to Mr. Stratford's point that he made, I don't want them to feel like they're wasting their time, either. So I think that that's going to be key for staff in that first meeting, to tee it up for them, and maybe even for them to hear from us a little bit more about what we're looking for, just so that they're all under, because I even saw that in their applications, a lot of them have different ideas of what this group should be doing, which is fine, but I don't want them to spin their wheels at first meeting, fighting over what it is that they're going to be doing. I know that that will come out, but I think the more that we can frame it for them, the better off we'll be. So unless you're opposed, I don't, I would like for both of these gentlemen to serve on the committee, and I know that we have to have staggered terms, at least that was what staff had recommended in here. So I believe it was, two of them will be two years, and three will serve, no, two will serve for one year, three for two years, was that what it was? And my preference would be for these two gentlemen to serve the two-year term, unless you think differently, or I don't know how we come up with that. Roll the dice.
That's fine.
See what the preference is, maybe.
Your, it's at your discretion how you assign the terms, so.
Yeah, I think, I think I'd like to see, like, I wish we would have had.
Me, too.
So.
We can hold off on making a decision until we talk to the others as well.
I'd like to, I'd like to do that, just in the interest of.
Of course, of course.
The complete picture.
No, that makes sense. I like it.
But yeah, no, I mean, thank you again for coming out, and Mr. Stratford, obviously, he's not here, but he, anyone who puts himself out there, I think is great.
Good.
If that's the case, then I will work with the committee members to find another date and line it up with some people, and yes, you have a question, Mr. Killoran? I think it's still on the.
It is.
We have done that, but we will do it again. We will do it again, but thank you for that, yes. And we'll find a date for two or more additional interviews, meaning more than potentially two more candidates. And then those appointments may not get made at the December 20th meeting if we can't find the time. So, you know, we can't force this into a box if it's not going to go.
No, and I would ask that we even offer to do them via Zoom, and Brown Act, instead of having to come back into hoarder hall, if there's constraints.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's fine, too.
Yes, we, we, under the current guidelines, we can only do a Zoom if it is either for COVID reasons, or it meets all of the old criteria for a teleconference meeting, which means that people have to, people on the committee have to post their location and allow the public and do all the things. AB 361 is only in place for essentially public health reasons, it is not.
I may be feeling ill.
If you are feeling ill, then you can participate, but then we would have.
It's going around.
It is going around, we do, so we can talk about that offline in terms of specifics. And if there's nothing else, that would close this item.
Yes, please.
We have one more super quick item.
Okay.
Roll it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
All right, we're going to go on to item 3C, which is renewed signature authorizations for investing city funds in the local agency investment fund, and recommendation to forward to the full city council for adoption.
So this is just an FYI, doesn't even really need the committee's approval, we must bring it to our city council. LEAF requires a resolution that names the positions, and we don't have the Assistant to the City Manager position filled right now, so that position, we are out of people who can sign on behalf of making LEAF transactions. So we will bring this, I actually may add back the Assistant to the City Manager position, because we might fill it, I don't know why I didn't think of that.
Then you don't have to do another resolution.
Right. Apparently, that wasn't in my head at the moment, but it is adding the interim finance director, just so we have that title specifically authorized by the council, as well as the finance director title, and the city clerk, so that we have a backstop for LEAF transactions. Our city clerk is already a signatory on our bank account, so she does perform some of those financial functions. So unless there is an objection, I will be bringing this to the full council, and it's really just a, sort of a ministerial item.
Go forth and be merry.
Yes, I think that's great. Yes, I think that's great.
Do we want to open the item to public comment?
I think we're required to.
All right. I do not see anybody in the room and I currently do not have any hands raised on Zoom, so we'll go ahead and close public comment on this item.
Thank you. So I will be bringing that back to the full city council.
Great. And then I know that we're pretty much done, but speaking of the interim finance director, does that language need to be put back in the IPSC earlier item? It only reads finance, treasure and finance director? Or are we okay keeping it?
That's an internal policy as opposed to a legislative document that we're submitting to another agency. So we could put interim, but it doesn't, it doesn't need to the way this is a requirement. Like, because right now if Nataj signed something as interim, they would be like, but you're not listed. And that was our concern.
Understood. Thank you.
All right, well, the time is now 6:31 PM and we will officially adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.